Mr. Perez?
Here.
Dr. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Here. I'm number three on the agenda, um, adoption of the agenda, can I have a motion?
Come in.
Second.
Mr. Cook? Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi? Mr. Perez? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, number four, we have some, uh, recognitions this month?
Yes, as you guys referenced, uh, at the organizational meet, organizational meeting, it is a little awkward more for Mrs. Steffi than anybody else, but welcome and trust me, you will deserve it when your term is done. Uh, so yes, you may not have earned it yet, but you will have earned it when it's time. Uh, but January is board appreciation month. Um, and so this year what we had is, we had is our, some of our district have made a number of cards, uh, to give to you. So Mrs. Spar made a, a, gave a few of them to you guys here, but that table back there is full of, of, of cards, of which most of the kids, when this is a low bar, have bar, have better handwriting than what I do. If any of you have seen anything handwritten from me, you will understand why I say that. Um, but really it is just a token for us to be able to thank you for the work that you do as a board member. It is a very selfless act. I think a lot of times people assume that board, that board members job. Uh, and that's to do the day in, day out of running the district and stuff like that. And that's obviously not what a board does. Board sets policy overseas, Mr. Cook and I, uh, sets that policy and gives an overall direction about where we want to head. And, and I'm very grateful for each and every one of each and every one of you, uh, for the work that, uh, it is selfless act. Um, and I do this with a smirk. Uh, you, you guys don't do it for the big checks that you get, which since I'm being recorded, they don't get big checks for being on the board. Uh, it's actually pretty, pretty minuscule. And, and, and the masculine as well. Um, but people get on the boards and what I'm very grateful for, I love, I think disagreements are good from time to time. I think we need to have difference of opinions and I think we have five board members that can have differences of, of opinions. But so with all five of you, you all have the one commonality, which is you all want to do what is absolutely best for our students in our community. And I think when that's the common goal and when that's a common focus from a board, from a board of education, mission, good things trickle down because of it. On behalf of everybody in the district who, who sees you and we, we know some of what you do, even if other people don't, thank you for agreeing to be public servants and to serve our district and community. And please, uh, enjoy, that is a, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a cupcake. It's a hot cocoa bomb. So don't, I was told not to eat it like a cupcake, that that would be bad. So, uh, but there's other cards back there. If you'd like to take some of those with you or just flip through them and see what the students have done. Uh, but once again, thank you for your service, public servants for Tiffin City Schools.
Well, thank you to all the kids that have produced this because we do do what we do for the kids of our district. So thanks to all the kids that produce all this thing, produce all this thing and, uh, this too.
Dr. McBride volunteered to eat the hot cocoa bomb.
I just asked that if anybody eats it, that they take a video, if they do it like a cup, like a cupcake. That's all. What? You've never done one of these? You pour like hot milk or hot water over it? Ah. Mr. Richards, somebody help him. Somebody help him. Thank you.
Moving on. I'm number five, uh, superintendent's reports and recommendations.
No, so we, we were having during our special meeting, I think it's just another conversation about where we go as our district, um, financially with, with the various needs that we have a lot of significant, significant in our district. And meaning that we had just few moments that concluded a few moments prior, we were kind of ending with the fact that we don't have even certain curricular materials, um, which I would call kind of the, the tools that our staff needs to do their jobs effectively. Um, I, like I said, I think in any aspect to be given the tools necessary to successfully complete your job. And, and from looking around and talking with some people, I don't think that's an area that we have, um, met the standard that we should for, with our, with our teachers and staff. Um, and can we write a check for it? We could write a check, we could write a $2 million check to a textbook company today. So I, I just want us to make certain that when people say, well, you don't have the money. No, we do have, I mean, we have money in the bank. We go spend two, we go spend $2 million. Our is going to look a lot worse now. So I think it's, it's fair for us to have conversations and to keep talking. So I'm, I'm happy to use during my time, um, with a superintendent report, because I do think this is important, an important conversation, important conversation point for us to have. I know the, I know the work session that we do ahead of time is, is open to the public as well, but this one's videotaped. And I think it's important on video, uh, for, for us to, I hate, some people will say it's airing our dirty laundry. I think it's just accurate, accurately portraying where we are right now and, and giving a full account as to where we are. Because you can't, you can't solve the problem unless you can correctly identify what your problems are. Um, and so we have, and I, I please, I'm giving teachers, our teachers do, our teachers do a phenomenal job and I, and I do. But my understanding, and I'll look back at Mrs. Jones, my understanding is take K through five reading right now. Everybody kind of does their own thing to a certain amount. I mean, even within, even within, you know, Ms. Jones teaches kindergarten, teaches kindergarten, even within kindergarten, do some materials, some use, because they're doing, they're, they're piling together whatever they can on their own for the most part. And, and I appreciate the work that they're doing. So please know I'm not upset with our teaching staff when I make this comment. But having energization, resources that we are using to teach kids means that we are increasing our deviation from student learning even more from year to year and kid to kid. And so that, the kid that we're trying to educate, becomes an even wider set of skills and needs and abilities that we're trying to educate. Which we, we have on a normal basis, right? We have kids come to us with all different backgrounds and levels anyway, but some of this is self inflicted.
Teachers.
Not on the teachers.
Not the, that's not on the teachers. They're working with what they have or don't have. So they're making do with do.
So it, and, and, and having kids that come in at, and I'll just know, Mrs. Jones, coming in at kindergarten at different levels, that's kind of, that, that, that happens. So they, they come in, they come in at different grade levels, they come in at levels, I mean. And, and that's a normal part of what we deal with in education. That's our job. But now to say that what happens in teacher A's classroom can be wildly different than teacher B's classroom and wildly different than teacher C's, than teacher C's classroom. Let's just use kindergarten. And you go, well, that's not a huge deal, is it? Except now when they go to first grade and the second, and the first grade teacher has somebody from teacher A, from kids from teacher A, kids from teacher B and kids from teacher C, we're not always even using the same, the same terminology. Mr. The special board meeting by saying, we need to have some common sets of facts, some common language for us to all use so that we as a board can communicate more effectively, which I think is absolutely is right on the money. We're not doing that, doing that with, with our own staff to the best of our abilities. Uh, and, and I give them all the credit in the world, but I think if I were honest, I think we have let down our teaching staff by not giving them all of the materials and resources, resources necessary to be most efficiently do their jobs, which would, our job that we ask them to do is educate kids as effectively and efficiently as possible. And that's my mission of what our teachers are expected to do. And I would say we have not, we have not given resources to be able to do that.
In how long?
I'm still don't know the answer to that. I can tell you that even Mr. Kizbeth had said that we used to have a process for, it was a, you know, 10-year textbook read, textbook read, anything like that. I don't, I don't know when that changed. I don't have that answer. And, and I will say I can, I can do some work to try to figure it out, but my, my MO has pretty much been looking to the past, doesn't help me out a lot, helped me out a lot. It's the problem that also, so how do we fix? Um, so the right, the reality is how do we fix the issue that we are in right now? Um, so I do want to be careful to say, well, we can't afford to do it right now. We, we could, we could write a, if it's $2 million for curriculum, we could write a $2, we could write a $2 million check. But I'll, I'll use the other, typically you're Robin Peter to pay Paul. We're, we're making ourselves feel better right now, but it creates a bigger hole for us in the future. And so I think it's important for us to have that conversation, a conversation at a board level. Say, what are our priorities as we are working through things, um, to have to work through? Uh, but this is one that's, it's significant. Uh, I will hope that there will be some money down the road, down the road to, to help all a portion of the curriculum. Uh, because I do believe that will happen in some form, but on the same token, we've been getting no ideas about the amounts for anything like that. So I don't think we can bank on that. Uh, we have to be prepared to do what we need to do on, on our own.
Those decisions used to come out of a program committee and I don't know when the program committee quit being the program committee. So we don't have that right now.
It stopped four years ago, four years ago.
That sounds about right from what I feel.
Sat on some of those program committees as an administrator, as a teacher, I can tell you many times they were long, long drawn out. But we did have a cycle for textbooks and curriculum, so.
I sat on that as a community member and then, and then when I was on the board, that program, that, that committee was done. And I, there were not curriculum updates while I was during my cycle on there.
I would say that since I was on the board, was on the board, the program committee didn't do anymore. They dealt with other policy.
Yeah, it got, that whole program.
Specifically, I did bring up the issue of textbooks and curriculum and I was told that it was budgeted, but then we wouldn't spend it. It was moved over because it needed to be addressed, but never was. So I think up in committee, there's two separate issues though. One is our long-term policy or practice going to be regarding our curriculum. You know, for example, I know that our math textbooks are pretty old as they refer to, I think calculators that may or may not exist anymore, exist anymore. But we use these. Um, I know this, I brought up the science books, you need to update those. We have Lincoln books that are still being used. But we have to do it in an intentional way as, as we, we're not just going to dump everything out and try to fix everything at once. Because, because I think the administration there to guide, to ensure that we have a standardized curriculum for our district. That hasn't been there, I think, since I've been here and, and I'm only speaking as an observer. But then two is the second issue we touched on the finance meeting, which is what came up, is I think it is fair to call it an, call it an unfunded mandate. Plan as a board for a governor or legislature to come in and decide, hey, we want you to teach this new curriculum this year and we're not going to fund it. And you said we could write a check for it, we can't because they haven't approved the curriculum for it.
So that, that is a good point, that is a good point as well, Mr. Perez. Uh, legislature, uh, now it's the do, I keep saying ODE. Uh, the do is the Department of Education workforce is supposed to create a list of approved materials. That was supposed to be done, I'll look around, November? Was that, was that? Yeah. And now, and that still hasn't been done.
But that's just for the science.
That's just for the science of reading though. Back to your point.
But it's just for the science of reading, but for us, that's a huge expenditure, huge expenditure. You were saying just for K and unplanned $500,000 outlay that we didn't plan on. So that, I think we just talked in how many mills that would be that we have to take on because we're required to, nobody really consulted with us, you know, but we have to do it. And so it's kind of hard, hard to budget both ways. We have to deal with biennial budgets, new administrations over four years.
I hear you, Mr. Perez, but having curriculum updates baked into the, into the budget and then having a process where for the last six, eight, 10, 12 years, 12 years, we're following that. Doesn't sound as though that's been done. And so now this is another place where there is a fairly substantial gap for all of our students. So that mandate is the one that's kind of in our face right now.
Yes.
And yes, it's unfunded. But I believe we.
Real every day.
What? What?
There's the real every day of them that hasn't been assessed. That's why I said there's two issues.
And so I, I can only, it's been a long time since I've been in the K-12 classroom, but Mr. Richards, you were a K-12 classroom teacher. And what is the message that we're sending when we're not giving our teachers and our students updated and appropriate curriculum?
Well, and I think, I think it's what I said before, the, the message is that we are not equipping, if, if we want to use a typical layperson definition, we are not equipping our employees with the tools necessary to effectively do their jobs. Now I think there's, I think there's, and my guess is that it, it did work like that busing situation, I'll tell you, where we said it, we can just, we're, we're not going to do it every 10 years. We're going to go every 11 years and, and that's okay. And, and teachers go, we can go an additional year without the new tech. It's, it's fine, fine. Typically in those situations, and this is my guess of what happened, is it just kind of, it didn't happen overnight, it just kind of.
Snowballs.
Snowball eventually got away from us. And, and that's where I said, I don't know if it does any good to do a, go and do a postmortem of how, of how do we get here? Maybe a little, but the reality is it's the situation we're in right now. You guys have hired me to lead our district and to try to get us on a better path forward. And I think it's important to have that conversation, but to your point, Dr. McBride, that when we talk about, about we're doing this so because of where we are with funds, we're not flush with cash. If we're doing this over here, it means we're not doing something over here. And I think we need to have conversations better about, well, if we're doing this, what does it mean, what does it mean that we're not? Uh, and I think that's a fair conversation to put in front of a board. It's fair for us to talk about, as we're talking about a future levy ask, where do, do we want to go? Yes, it's going to be, it's, it's going to help us out for, we're, we're going to plan to be four years from, from November again, but our plan is to go for even more millage upfront because we don't want to just plug the holes. We want to not get there all overnight, but we want to start making gains. And so I think, and they're going to die in with that, but I think at a, at a 30,000 foot view, we want to start with overall, where do we want to try to go? Do we want to say, I don't think getting there overnight in one fell ask is going to be, be reasonable. But do we want to sit there and say, our goal is just to plug the holes on the boat right now? And then come back a few years later and then try to better move some stuff forward or there's, there are different philosophies with that. There's different strategies with, strategies with that. And I think the conversation, uh, and in talking with Mr. Williams a little bit with finance committee and stuff, I think that's the conversation that this group should be really having because like I said, we can go write a check for $2 million today. We, we can, we can, we can go, if you say go fix tomorrow, we have money in the bank, we can go fix curriculum tomorrow. But we also have to understand that by saying yes to that, that's going to put us in a bigger hole for our five-year forecast. And so what is, so what does that mean? What it means is us will with levy ask, it means even more cuts that we'd have to make to try to make ourselves whole.
I don't, I don't think that any of us are thinking we're going to fix curriculum tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I don't think, think that looking back lame is, works. But I think we have to figure out, how did we get here? For how many years maybe this wasn't being attended to because we can't have it happen again. So we definitely need to make sure there's a plan like there used to be, be to, to assess curriculum every year and see what needs to be purchased, dealt with. Because it sounds to me like maybe this hasn't been addressed for years if our elementary is that lacking in several subjects.
And I want to defer, defer, she and I haven't talked anything that's incorrect, by all means, please chime in if I am. Yes. She said they, we have a robust phonics program, which is a part of the science of reading. That's a part of that, but the science of reading is a multi-tiered, tiered approach.
Science and social studies were mentioned also.
And math.
That we're lacking in those in the elementary buildings.
Yes.
So that there, it's not something we're going to fix tomorrow anyhow, no matter how we pay for it. But I think we need to decide how we're, how we're going to move forward and there needs to be a plan for sure. And I mean, coming off of COVID, when we know there's already deficits and, and, you know, we've lost ground, not us, but kids in general because of the situation. This, this we be planned out and dealt with and.
Yes, Dr. McBride.
So I, I, I hear the thing that you said where like, if we do this, it means what are we not doing?
Yes.
And I, I feel that that is a very appropriate way to look at things and I think a holistic approach to look at things. So we're, so we're master facilities plan and there's operating budget and then we know that we have collective bargaining. Curriculum hasn't been discussed. And so like in my head, I'm over here sitting here going, how on earth do we at all and the cost of that per year, when I don't know how that's going to affect us being able to catch curriculum up?
And I think that's, it is one of the reasons why I wanted this discussed today. I, I think it's fair to have that conversation. I think that's a fair conversation for us to have, and I think we should be having it as a board. Because I think we have to be able to say, whenever we do something over here, what is it, what are we not doing over, over on the other side? Uh, because we just aren't in a fiscal position where we can say, we can do it all and we're okay. It, let me give you extremes though, because I, I want to show, and usually the truth is somewhere in the middle. So maybe we sit there, one extreme could, could be, listen, we're going to do everything that we need to do, that, that we know needs, know needs to be done. Back to your, back to your, the track needs to be done as well, curriculum needs to be done. So Mr. Richards, Mr. Cook, pay the dang money. And then that, it, it increases the bill that we now need to pass along to the community because we've now done the things that we think are necessary. So that's, that's, that's kind of extreme. Then we have, okay, well, let's do it in phases, let's, let's do it a little bit smaller. We can do some of it now that's going to, it's going to affect the five-year forecast, but let's do a smaller ask right now. We'll, we'll do the few key areas. But at some point in time, that's to, what are we asking in terms of dollars, millage that we are asking the voters for? What we have to, what I think myself and Mr. Cook and the board of education has to talk about is what is not, not just, not just what's the dollar figure? In fact, starting with the dollar figure is probably a bit of a mistake. It's what are the needs that we have? What do we need? What is the dollar figure in emergency levy? What is the dollar figure that if you say as a board, forget about moving, plug the gaps for three to four years? We don't want a deficit spend for four years. Okay, we can, we can put that plan together. If you say, we want to fix curric, fix curriculum that in an expedient manner. My curriculum is our higher priority, but then try to come up with some other things on, on a lower priority with some of the PI fixes and stuff like that. We can put that plan together, plan together. But I guess elective conversation and with the board, as I just said, being elected emissaries from the community of where do we want to go? What is the plan that we can put together? Because Mr. Cook and I can put any plan together. I mean, like I said, we could write a check tomorrow for all the curriculum and say we're done. But that's now decreased raises, raises for staff, that's decreased other things that we're doing and it's bigger ask that now we're passing along to our community. Yes.
So we've been working to, to better mean, operating and capital improvement and then facilities.
Yeah.
Curriculum comes out of operating. Is that typical?
Um, it, so with, with textbooks, if it lasts for more than years, we could use PI for that.
Okay.
So that, and I will tell you, some districts have different philosophies. It's not uncommon to see some districts use PI money for textbooks. Does that happen everywhere? I don't know, I don't know, I don't, Mr. Cook, you probably.
One way, half a dozen another.
I'm agnostic to it, if that makes sense. Um, I think we have needs everywhere. So if that's something the board decides they want to do, and let's say we carve out an additional couple hundred thousand dollars a year for three, four, five years to help bridge gaps, whatever the figure is. I'm okay, I'm okay with it. I think it's very hard for me to look at an operating budget or figures, we just don't have a plan. I mean, that sounds crazy, but we have no plan. It's another layer of the onion we peeled back and we've discovered.
So can you use that PI as stopgap or once you decide, you decide to use it, you're stuck using?
We have complete flexibility on that, um, with that, that curricular purchase. We could, we could even mix and match if that makes sense.
It might be smart to use it stopgap right now for part of the, part of the curriculum.
Talk about, you know, lease purchase options and stuff, I mean, that can be used for anything. I mean, we could theoretically, we could use that for curriculum to buy a curriculum materials, couldn't we? I believe so. I mean, if we wanted to.
We could, we'd be encumbering other assets for that, but yeah, there's, there's financing options available.
So, so there's a lot of different avenues, but I think the goal is to really start having these robust conversations about all the needs that we have. So I, I say at that 30,000 foot view and we need to start circling the plane so we can start ending it, ending it somewhere. But for us to appropriately land that plane, I know I'm pushing my metaphors, I like to talk about ships and now I'm on planes. But we're going to have to talk about all of the things that go into that. Because whenever we say yes to something, we're saying no to other things and, and we have, and we have to know what that, what those things.
So to bring up another one of your analogies, the, the hurricane map.
Yes. There's a storm coming. That was his.
His?
That was his, which I liked it.
Where, so we do have a curriculum budget. We know it's not sufficient.
Correct, correct.
What, what should be, should be discussing? Because we're not going to, when we're planning, we're not going to discuss exact dollar amounts, right? So what, what's the, should we be thinking 500,000 a year or 5 million a year that we need to spend on curriculum? Help, help us on that one.
Spitball gun to head, based on what I heard tonight, I think you're half a million figures, million figures, probably closer to that. I mean, it sounds like we have deficiencies.
I guess, how long are we looking until we could have an understanding of where our curriculum deficits are and estimated cost, even if it's not to the penny? And like, how long, how far are we out from that?
Uh, hopefully we can have that in the next, that in the next month. That'd be my hope.
And so then we could have some discussions about.
Yes.
The urgency and priority levels and getting these on a cycle. But right now we're talking about things in the abstract. We don't actually know.
Thank you.
Correct. Mr. Perez, you had.
The, the real issue is we have to start with a plan first, just like we started looking at the capital expenditures. It, it's not going to happen, but we need to know from our staff what their recommendation is for nation is for this curriculum policy and laying that out. Because you're going to have to figure out where to prioritize stuff, not really the board, you are in terms of the budgeting process. Because you guys are the experts, you know what needs to be done, you know what math has to be done, sciences, you know what's coming. So, but you need to present to us what that financial plan, ancient plan is going to require us to do.
Agree with that. I just wanted to be able to, and, and we're in the process of working on that, Mr. Perez. But I thought it was important to present that to the board in a timely fashion of where we were, um, with that. Because that was a stone, stone that was uncovered, that was not expected. I think Mr. Cook used a good word choice. Everywhere I've worked, we've had a set number of years for textbook adoption and we just go through that process. And because there's been that work that's happened and it's happened and, and some stuff that I see. I think as we're talking about other things, I think we also talk about, you know, property, you know, we're going to be talking about, uh, with a bond issue. One of the conversations that's going to be had of me, and I've already been having some conversation, the conversation is if you were, when right now, the plan that we're trying to get feedback on. And yet again, a shameless plug for six o'clock on Wednesday night, I have another virtual meeting, town hall for that on, on Wednesday at six o'clock. That's already been published with a link to it and it's been on Facebook, website, the AT's published it and such, like helping with all of that. But the current plan would be that we would build a, from the superintendent advisory committee, that we build a new elementary on the land right next to the middle school here. Um, and then build a new high school, a new high school adjacent to the current high school would be all of our, that would be the buildings of our district. We'd still keep Lincoln for, for preschool purposes. But that leaves three buildings that we wouldn't need moving forward. So I've been having conversations with some people about what, about what, those, if we no longer needed to use them and is there additional revenue that way? Yes.
Does that then also bring us up a little bit to have a discussion about the, the land at the south end of town and how that fits into our plans or, or doesn't fit into our plans?
So I think that's a fair conversation for us to have as a board, a board. And Mr. Kizbeth are on the superintendent advisory committee. As I, I will enjoy talking about that everything from the superintendent advisory has now been put on that separate website that we linked to on our website. All of the information, all of the surveys that the superintendent advisory committee did, committee did. I think it was day two, day one or day two of the superintendent advisory committee. Was, okay, there was a general need that we need some, especially a new elementary, that was pretty quick. And one of the things, one of the things that was talked about was where would we want to put that? One of the sites that was identified was here next to the middle school. Do we want some other site or sites in and around town? Or do we want the, do we want to use that land down to the south? You, anybody can go on, I, I, it's been a. Anybody can go on, it's been a hot edit, but I think it was something like 85% of the people said no to the land to the south. And anecdotally, I will tell you, the other 15% weren't necessarily excited about it, but I think they were going, we need an elementary in here where it goes, we just, we just have a need. I will tell you, and you guys are elected by the community, I have yet to encounter anyone who is excited about us building on the lands, the lands to the south. Might be out there, I've just not encountered that. In fact, very bluntly, I've, the way it's been explained to me is, that land is kind of an albatross around our neck, so to speak. And so I think it is worthy of a conversation and a conversation, and if we want to have some of that now, as to where the board sits on that and how the board feels about that. I think a number of you weren't on the board when the decision was made to purchase the land. So I think it's safe to say it's a different, it's a different, so Mr. Perez? Four out of five board members weren't around for that decision, or let me rephrase, weren't on the board for that decision. So I think it's fair, Mr. Williams, if the board wanted to entertain that as a conversation or discussion point, I think that's fair for the board to be.
I think it is a good conversation, because it does represent a fairly significant financial asset that we have, right? In the form of property, of course, right? So it's not entirely liquid, but we're having these conversations about where do we get large sums of money, right? We own so many slums, and, you know, selling assets has a limit, right? You only have so many assets that you can reasonably sell, or get rid of, or whatever with, right? But some of these things that we're talking about, for instance, the track is a $950,000 anticipated cost, anticipated cost. We have a lot of these large-ticket items, and we do need to find creative ways to fund them. And, you know, personally, I'm in support of the plan that we do have on paper right now, at least, that we're presenting to the public with where the schools, where best place in the schools, and it does not include that land on the south end of town.
It does not.
Right? So personally, I would be in favor of finding ways where we are no longer the proprietors of an 82-acre plot that we do not intend to use.
And that would certainly, PI, and could really help with some curriculum issues, at least with us, it would be a start for some of those curriculum issues.
So anybody else want to weigh in on that? I heard Mr. Williams, and I heard, only because any action to do anything with real estate would have to be a vote on by the board. Now, there's no motion before the board right this moment, but I guess, just looking for, taking pulse from the board as to directions for where you, Mr. Cook and I, to spend our time and resources. So what I heard is, Mr. Williams and Mr. Kissabeth saying they would be interested in us utilizing some of our time and resources to explore, I'll use Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams' options, longer the owners of that land.
Does being a landlord of that land behoove us? Does it, is it giving us rich finances to be able to do some of these?
We do collect rent, farm rent, from the individual that farms it, that farms it, a little amount of money, but we do, we do make some money off of that, off of owning it. That being said, though, we spent, you know, I think $998,000 to acquire it. So the amount that we collect each year doesn't make up for the amount that we expended on it.
Physically, it does not make sense for us as a district, if we, if there are no plans currently or moving forward, for this to be a building location, our current plan is to be a landlord.
Wait, jump in, jump in. The $223 sticks out, is it something like $200 an acre we charge rent?
I think this year it was 311, approximately $25,000 a year.
Okay.
So 2.5% yield, which.
So the break even on it, we're.
Expenses are minimal, minimal, it's baked into our property. I would have to look and see, I think a lot of that's included in aggregate form, I don't know that we have a huge expense from it, outside of the initial capital outlay, if you will.
And speaking for the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, there is no plan to present that to the board. I mean, we have, let's put my board hat back on now, we have nothing in front of us as to where we want to go to school, but I think I speak from what we've heard from the Superintendent's Advisory Group, is that there's no interest in that land being used, being used, building or a high school.
And I would say the feedback I've received is that as well, just out in the public, that was not a popular acquisition, or really a place that most people wanted to school.
Wanted to hear from everyone. I think, you call it an albatross. I think from a board member, I think that that's been something we've, it kind of like the public has said, you're not really serious about your finances, because you're holding on to that land, or you're, we really can't trust you, because we know you're going to come back, or you're going to come back with that land. But we also just don't want to like, we might have to take a loss on it realistically, but one, it's property that's not on the tax rolls.
Right.
So we're kind of hurting our own tax base by doing it. Two, it could be opened up for other opportunities, residential development, but right now, I think except farmland, and it's not really helping us in that regard. And I have to defer to the committee. I listened intently, really didn't give my opinion on those, I think you did the same. Nobody really looked at that land as a viable option, that they would, that they would swing something on. Why would we hold on to it at some point? And I think, just even putting it up for auction, putting it for sale sign, at least shows that we're doing due diligence to try to get something for it at this point.
And I think there's a number of different options that Mr. Cook and I can do. I think your word choice was very appropriate of where we can no longer, where we are no longer the owners of that. I think the process that we use and the methodology, that can all be very fluid, because I think there's a number of, there's a number of avenues to deal with that. But I will say, yet again, with the Superintendent Advisory, there were a few times where there were some close votes where, eh, we were trying to narrow down certain options, but that was one pretty early on. I think it was day two, it was day two, and anybody can go on the website, feedback and the survey feedback. And I will tell you, it makes me feel a little bit, it makes me feel a lot better about the work of the Superintendent Advisory Committee, because I do believe, at least on that regard, the feedback that we received from the Superintendent Advisory Committee, yet again, I don't, I have to talk to everybody, haven't met everybody in this community yet, but it does so far match the feedback that came from the Superintendent Advisory Committee, feels like it matches the feedback that I get just when I'm out and about talking to people in the community. That seems, that seems to, well.
I think additionally, there's a piece where we have all of these needs, but also we're going to our community soon, likely to ask for money. We have a need, and I think it is very hard to look at community members and say, we still have this that we're sitting on, that we're sitting, asking you to come to the table. And so I think that there are other pieces there as well at play that, I agree with Mr. Williams' word choice of exploring our options.
Yes. Mr. Perez?
Just having moved into this community, and I think some of you have seen our residents like government entities that own land. So when I first joined, it was like, we still had the West Junior High property. We still have a practice field down in the valley as well, near Charlotte as well, that we've been holding on. We did get rid of the property, thankfully, after these years, we did sell west finally. And I think the public wants us to see us do that, just move on and have a plan to what you have and maintain what you have.
I won't speak, if one of you chooses to kind of out yourself, that's fine, that's fine. Maybe even more than one person on the board has said, a goal would be for us to not be one of the largest landlords. I wasn't going to out you.
I will happily.
But I think there's some, I think there's some truths to that, is, our job is not to acquire, ask new things, our job is to make sure we're spending our money on educating kids. And I'm not, I'm not critical, I wasn't around for the decision to acquire the land, that's fine, but I think now we have to look at where we are, what the feedback that we have is, and what our needs are, needs are. And so I think that land actually is very pertinent, Mr. Williams, to the conversation that we are having this evening, exactly for the reason that you said. If we're talking about where we need to get money from, and that we have all these needs that we can't afford to, if you've got a, I think, you're William, Dr. McBride, if we're sitting on, you know, roughly a million-dollar asset, thereabouts, you know, maybe it's a little bit less, maybe it's a little bit more, it's really hard to go to people, say, we need more money, when they're sitting there going, but you're sitting on, you're sitting on a, you're sitting on a million-dollars thing. And if these plans go forward, they do seem like it has some pretty strong support, at least for location, at least the location part seems very, very strong. If it's not part of our master plan moving, plan moving forward, there we go. Thank you, Mrs. Jones, for getting the door, I appreciate that. I think that's, that's something that's worthwhile to explore. So what I am hearing is from all the board, that you would be supportive of us taking some time and energies, energies to explore what we could have. And obviously, since this is at a board meeting, and it's being taped recorded right now, that it's public, to know that that is a direction that we are looking at heading. Yes.
Can you also look at the land, so look at the land by Lincoln?
By Lincoln? Yeah.
Field there as well, we've had that as well.
Yeah, there's, Mr. Perez's point is, if you haven't looked at a auditor's map of around Lincoln, there's a huge field that's attached to that, and we own all of that.
On the other side of the road, right? Ballright Field.
And to his, and to his point as well, we do own, I'm going to look, some of you that have been in this community for an awful long time, it's actually down, Mr. Perez is correct, it's down close to Charlotte, is it used to be called the banned practice field. It is actually across the street from the Calvert baseball or softball field, or the field, their fieldhouse that they have there. That is actually owned by Tiffin School Schools. My understanding, and I'll look to Steffi and Mr. Kissabeth as my resident historians, but how long has it been since we actually used that as a banned practice field? Anybody want to take any guesses?
Yeah, it's not, it's not been as long as you might.
Oh, really? Okay, really? Okay.
Coach, we used it.
Okay.
But that was, gosh, I don't even know, I've been.
Make sure what piece of land we're talking about before we.
Yeah, it's, it's the one down, you have to keep going more down towards the river, but it's right across from the Calvert House.
It's probably, it's probably been 10 years, I don't think Mr. Meadows has used it, I think my camp did use it.
A decade is a pretty long.
Yeah.
You know, it's amazing how quickly it goes.
Maybe not as long as you think, but a decade is a pretty long, is a pretty long.
Mike Urozak used it, Mr., we used it for a lot.
Yeah.
I coached 15 years, and we always used it, but then I don't think it's been in use since like 2015, 2014.
And yet again, is that a, is it a significant thing?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I want to say that our time and attention for mowing it, it doesn't take us that long, right? It's just a parcel of land. But yet again, I think it goes to, Mr. Perez, to your point of, I think there is an expectation, and I've kind of gotten this sense as well, is, as well, is, there is a sense in the community of, we expect you to try to turn over every stone you can prior to coming to us, and I don't know, maybe we don't get anything, maybe we don't get much for that land. I doubt it's going to be of high value. I can pull it up on the auditor, pull it up on the auditor site here in a second. Worthy of conversations about, are those other avenues that we want to explore? You know, and we can continue having those conversations. Some of that, we can, when we get more specific, I'm just saying this for the general public that, well, some of that, we will need to discuss in executive session, simply because actual real estate transfers, when you're talking about negotiating, you don't want to necessarily do that out in front of everybody, in front of everybody. That hurts you from a negotiating standpoint of where your dollars are, but I think stating what our intents are, intense are, totally fine to be done in public, because I don't think that's bad to telegraph what our intents are. If it is our intent to minimize the amount of district-owned property that we are not actively using on a regular basis, I think that's.
Or isn't forecasted, the plans that have been put forth.
Correct.
So it makes no sense for us to sell something that we're like, oh, but we plan to use that. So if there are pieces that we currently own, that are not in any of the plans put forward, it seems like a great use, like a great use of topic.
Okay. Sorry, that was a long superintendent recommendation list, but it was kind of a continuation of what we were having before, and I do think these are the conversations that we need to keep having more and more frequently, to help our district continue, district continue to move forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Next up is the opportunity for the public to address the board.
I usually just read like the first two things.
Okay. So per board policy, per board policy, BDDA, in the board shall give an address, if several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. Before go the rest of the paragraph for this evening. Do we have anybody in attendance tonight who would wish to address the board? We will move on to item number seven, the consent agenda. Have a motion.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kissabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes, yes.
Perez?
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. So we will read through the headings on the consent agenda, so we have approval of minutes from a few board meetings. We have the Treasurers Report, Committee Reports, reports from the Business Advisory Council December and November Financial Committee Reports, Employment, sorry, Employee Professional, I'm going to get this right, Employee Professional Staff for 2324, Employee Support Staff for 2324, we have donations and grants, and once again, thank you, thank you everyone for the grants. We have a stipend, Statement Purpose Budgets for 2324. Any questions or comments, discussion?
On the donations, where are those art cases going? That was, that was going, that was a pretty sizable there.
So, some of those art cases, in fact, I think we even put it out, the art department was able to secure, a high school art department was able to secure a grant, grant from the Tiffin for additional. Those are mostly going to go inside the main hallway. I call it the main hallway of the school, it's where, in between the auditorium and the gym. Mr. Kissabeth, is there a better name for that other? I just call it the main hallway.
I call it the hallway, too.
The whatever, that's going to be where it goes, and I give the art department a lot of credit, they wanted to create a, an environment more where they could show off the amazing amount of art, what our students are able to do in the art department is really, and give those, give those teachers and those staff, they're due for that, but they were able to secure some money from the Tiffin Foundation to be able to provide additional display cases for that. Am I right, Mr. Alvarado? Am I saying anything wrong? Okay, so, so it's really exciting about where some of that can go. And that is the White Family Charitable Fund, that's through the Tiffin Foundation.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, okay, seeing none. Mr. Cook? Uh, do we have to vote on that?
I have a motion in this, I can't, you just think.
Yeah. All right. Ready to call the roll? Mr. Kissabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Steffi?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, yes. Go back a few pages. All right, moving on to item number eight, action items. We have the district calendar, so approved district calendar for 2425. Do we have any motion to discuss?
So we presented this calendar back in December, and we had the calendar committee come and present that, or a member of the calendar committee present that, and all the work and the data that went into that, we didn't support the board to approve, we didn't want anybody thinking we were trying to sneak anything by, publicized the calendar, we put that out on Facebook and out on social media and on our website, as to what a proposed calendar was. Mrs. Spar is always my person to tell me what the mood is of, mood is of social media, so to speak. And one of the things she said is that most people were fairly supportive of the calendar. If I were to read the tea leaves, I think people are really, most people are just supportive of us starting our school year later, I think is what it really comes down to. I think there was a high desire for, high desire for that. As Mr. Bose likes to mess with me from time to time, he said, well, that just means we're going to have a warmer May, which he might be right on that. He just likes to mess with me, because yet again, I was out last week, and he got to be the one to do all the snow days, and he did a great job. They were easy decisions, I'd like to say, I'm pretty sure he got, I'm pretty sure he got an even bit of it. But even with my kids, I think he's more favored administrator in the district right now, for having all the snow days. So I think this is a good calendar, it's a two-year calendar, two years worth of calendar, so if we don't like anything, we can, we can, actually, this is only to prove the one year, isn't it?
Only one.
Okay, so we'd like to maybe bring back at another time to do the second year as well. But I will say, so far the feedback that I have heard, I've not heard anybody, no one's emailed me, saying, emailed me saying they are opposed to it. I don't know any feedback in opposition to that, but yet again, we wanted to, if we're talking about something that affects when kids are coming to school, we wanted to provide ample time for people to provide feedback to that. And so far, the feedback that I have received, very little, very little I received has been positive.
Think that committee did a really thorough and excellent job in getting feedback and coming up with three options, and I, I think they did a really nice job. And Mrs. Cole stated it very well, very well, when she was here to present, going to please everybody, but that this one pleased the most people.
And I will say, I will give Mrs. Cole a lot of credit. I'm saying this knowing Mrs. Jones is sitting right behind me. The calendar that Mrs. Cole presented is not the one she personally wanted, if I'm, if I'm being honest. But I, it speaks to, if anybody's ever been on a calendar committee, it's not a fun committee to be on, ever. It's, you usually avoid it, and I was not looking forward to it, but I give every staff member, Mr. Alvarado was on that committee as well, I give every staff, staff member that was on that committee, because everyone on that committee checked their own preferences at the door and said, we are going to work collectively and we're going to listen to what the majority of people want, and we're going to try to do, to do that, assuming that what we're doing and advocating for, we think is our kids. So I give Mrs. Cole a lot of credit, and she never set it up there. This was not the one that she was hoping for. But she had said, I do understand where people are coming from, and I do believe this can still be good for kids, so therefore I have no problems throwing my support, throwing my support behind it. So I, there were a lot of people on the committee that did the same thing. I give everybody on that committee a ton of credit.
I appreciate all the work was done from us. I'm a firm believer, of course, I'm an old guy, but I'm a firm believer that most education takes place between Labor Day and Labor Day and Memorial Day under fits into that. My only concern is, are we normally 172 student days?
Not days, it's hours.
So.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a, so that's a conversation that we can now have as well.
I hate that.
And actually, and actually, I forgot that during Supers appropriate to talk about with calendar right now. There is a switch to hours. As it stands right now, if you convert our day, and I'm just going to talk about high school, because every building's a little bit different on how it stacks up to hours. We are, we are converting our student days. We are 22 days over the state minimum requirement. Now, keep in mind, that's a minimum requirement. That's not a, I like to say, minimum requirements are not goals.
Right.
That, that's a minimum, that's a minimum. However, 22 days over.
That's excellent. That answers my question.
And, and so I do think that there is some ability to be flexible, and I think one of the things the calendar committee looked at is, yes, are we somewhat decreasing by about, decreasing by about three days, we'd be student days. However, the reality is, are we really getting those three days worth of education now where they are located in the calendar in August? Are those, are those, are those really qualified? And I'm not, if we had air conditioning in our buildings, I think we could probably say they probably would be. And there are some schools around the state that start that early, start as early as us, if not a little bit earlier. But their kicker between us, the difference between us and them is, they have air condition, they have air conditioning. I think we can say it's apples to apples with the comparison, so I think that's one of the things that the community, the survey kind of, I don't know if it was articulated as well by them, or even by the staff, but I think that's been an underlying thing, is parents don't like sending their kids to buildings when they know it's really hot in there, really hot in there. So I think that's reflective of that. With, when I say about days, the reason that comes to play now, we now have used as of today still four planning days. If we go over five, we have options, how, how we can, I've checked around with some of our friends and neighbors, and some of them have said, we passed a resolution with a policy that said we could make those up virtually if we wanted to for hours, but in checking around with some of our friends and neighbors, most of them are not planning on making them, for the same reasons that many of us have talked about. We just, it's, it's hard to say that online learning is truly equivalent to what takes place in a physical classroom, and especially as the kids get younger and younger.
More difficult, more difficult.
So I met with the union today, so we're going to talk about some of those plans, because if you haven't seen the weather forecast, since I know I'm being published, and this is probably the only part that's going to be repeated from the board meeting, is that there is a good chance, or a chance, that's a chance that tomorrow we won't have school, nor I am not making that decision right now. You guys can send me away on vacation again and have Mr. Bose make it again, I'm fine with that. But there is a chance for ice tomorrow, and, and a decent amount of ice at that, ice at that. So it's a timely for us to have, yes.
Difficult vote, because I just like having Easter break, it's something I grew up with.
Yeah.
But I think the concern, I do like that we're moving the, the year later, because struggling, being in Noble, being in the other buildings, knowing that those kids, that those kids are, and the high school, I think people underestimate how hot one wing of that high school can get. But I think one of the concerns I have is a lot of the calendar, I think, was driven by the fact that our staff has to teach to these tests and have these kids ready for these state testings that they have to do, to do. We can't, we can't do much, but that to me is, you know, in terms of curriculum and what we discussed, is that what we really want in education is our, that's what our calendar goes around, is these tests, you know?
And that's a whole separate conversation for, if you want me to start talking, me to start talking about standardized testing, we don't have enough time for that, but I will tell you, there's, the quick summation of that is, in the decades that we have heavily invested in standardized testing with the goal of improving education, there, you will not find many, if any, any that say that standardized testing has improved education one iota. In fact, you will find some articles to the contrary that says it's actually come at the detriment to education. So I actually think that part of what we're doing is, we are conceding that we're in happy, that we're in happy days, days of instruction prior to testing, but I think it's also stating while testing, it's required for us, and we're going to, as long as someone's taking score and there's a competition, you're going to find that I want to compete and I want to beat anybody in a competition. If, if they turn the score, they turn, on, we're playing. I think we should also be having conversations about the, the true effectiveness of standardized testing, but that's not a conversation that we get to decide here in Tiffin City Schools. That decision is made for us.
Okay, any other questions or questions on the calendar, on the calendar?
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Steph? Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Okay, moving on to action item 8.2, adopting a lease purchase resolution for the, for the.
So moved.
Give a second.
So I think this goes back to what we've been talking about with everything else. I will reiterate, and Mr. Cook can correct me, for this resolution tonight does not tie our hands in any way, shape or form. Voting for this resolution tonight does not put us on a path that can't be altered.
I haven't executed any, executed anything at this point.
Yes. So I will make sure I state that, but I was hearing conversation as we were talking about curriculum, and as we talk about all the other needs that we have. So because we knew this was going to come up for a vote, yet again, that's why I wanted the timely conversation about talking about curriculum, about curriculum and some of those other needs, because I think, I think it's inappropriate to have prior to, I'll say prior to executing a check for this. So I, I think that's fair. We're, we're going to execute to move forward, but before we finalize, finalize anything, I'll come for final approval and authorization, if that makes sense, given.
Penalties?
I'm sorry?
Would there be any penalties?
No, we may incur some legal fees at that point. They're going to have to start running title searches, because we're going to encumber against one of our properties, but it'll be minimal.
Once again, the public school gets caught because we have not been reimbursed for a court case, court case that we won. It's, you know, we get accused of being bad business people. There's nothing we can do about that. And we won the case and still do not receive $1.
I think we've had actually about, just so I can, we were awarded $1.2 million, and I think so far, we've actually accumulated something around 10 grand. I haven't seen anything, but, yeah, so I, I don't want to say nothing, but out of.
1.2 million.
Out of 1.2 million, $10,000 doesn't really, doesn't really take us very far.
We, 1.2 million dollar judgment, we've received roughly 10 grand. What about how much we spent in attorney's fees?
We've spent more than $10,000 in legal fees.
By far.
By far, yes.
I, I just, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Richards. I have reticence in, in moving forward until we have some of those other pieces, especially around curriculum.
And, and I, I'm not going to argue, yet again, this is something we heard is, heard is, we need to fix the track with the other plan to be able to do that, worked with an entity to be able to do that. And so I, I, I won't be critical of any board member who disagrees or wants to do anything differently. Yet again, I think this is why Mr. Cook and I bring this to the board, to the board, so that you guys can help us, priorities are for us. We had heard track was next, we went through the litigation to Mr. Kizbeth's point, we said, well, this is unacceptable, because we have a track that's not functioning for us for many events. So Mr. Cook, Mr. Richards, and this would be, this would be what I'm, what I'm throwing his way. You know, you guys need to fix this. Okay, so we, we put together a, a, the most cost-effective way that we could go about fixing it, and I've even heard from a few community members that say, we're, we're a little disappointed, a little disappointed, because we're not getting the same top end quality product that we, we thought we were getting before. And, and that's true as well, but yet again, we're going, we don't even have a $1.2 million check to have that. We're having to come up with this on our own, and I do think we, we will need to continue to operate as if we are not going to see any more money from that. If we do get money from that, then that, that's fantastic, that'll be great news for us. But I think our current, to, to make a, making a plan, plan for that, be foolish on our part and, and not fiscally responsible as a district.
And I do think that y'all move forward in the way that, that we directed you as a board, and you brought us information that we asked for, and you've done all those pieces, but also, as you said, a new stone uncovered.
Yeah.
And so now there's more information.
Dr. McBride, as we did narrow down this, remember, we started originally with the auditorium that, and we tried to highlight the capital. I think there's an expectation that we'll go forward with this, but we want to see the plan for curriculum too, because that's, and I, I think the community has to understand, we have to make those decisions now, so.
So I guess the, what's still before the board then, that's why I wanted to reiterate, if, if we, if the board does not approve this resolution, then we completely freeze where we are right now. And if that's where the board is, truly, then that, so be it. I'm not going to complain about it like that. I'm not advocating for one way, but, so at, at some point, we just need the direction of whether we want to keep exploring this option to go down it. Yet again, it doesn't tie our hands, but if, if the board were to not approve that resolution, that resolution and voted, I'll be honest, and that's a pretty clear message that we now need to communicate with the track company, that it's, if we vote it down, the resolution down tonight, we are prob, probably telegraphing that we are not going to get the job done this spring, summer.
We could revisit, we could revisit it at a later date. It's our window to get it done this summer.
Correct.
But you also said that we could have a clearer view of the curriculum needs and deficits in about a month.
Yep.
So is tabling something and voting on it in February an option?
We could cer, we could certainly do that. I would recommend instead of tabling it, we move to postpone it. That way, it's not immediately due in February, should the board, whatever that uncovers, buys more time. The table would require action next month, move postpone, we could set a later date. We have a motion. Just remove it from this agenda.
Correct.
I think we've spent an awful lot of time and money getting to this place. Curriculum is very important, and I understand, I understand that, but I think it's more, more gets things done, knocks things off as they come to us. And if we have to sell property to the South, we sell property to the South.
We could certainly, we could certainly use those, spend around in three months, six months, whatever.
Go right into curriculum.
Pay this thing off, should the board decide to do that.
I, I think Mr. Kizbeth is right. We have worked on this for a while, and second of all, is if we do postpone it in another year, own it in another year, that doesn't mean that A, the curriculum any faster, B, that we're going to get the track any cheaper. If the plan is just to eliminate the track, then we're still going to have to eliminate the track, and that's going to cost us money as well. And then we would have to tell the public that we're going to do that.
I'm not certain postponing, I'm not certain postponing has to be a year.
But it is for construction.
What is our deadline to give them an answer?
Talk to Aaron on that one.
Yeah.
We really haven't had that convo. I know we were pretty hard and fast on our timelines here, because they were holding our spot, if that, if that makes sense, but postpone it a month. My gut would tell me, and again, I'm speaking way off term, haven't had those, they're going to start to get nervous about, are we going to proceed? Because the way it was relayed to me was their calendar was booking up.
Yeah. So we've, we've basically, basically, in this term, we've kind of, we've kind of signed an agreement to hold our spot in the line, to make sure we're taken care of. I will say, there was probably an understanding from that moment, yet, yet again, some variables have changed for us, and, and I, I hear that, I hear that. But I think to be fair to an organization that's, that's tried to do right by us, and they've really worked with us. This, and we have to be able to do what we need to do, but I also like to be fair to the people that we work with, that actively partner with us. If we're not looking at, we're not looking at engaging in that, if we need to postpone, then, then we should probably get to that, message that sooner rather than later to them. And yet again, and I know this is just now coming to you guys for this, I put out something a few weeks ago about curriculum, and so that's been a bit of, that's been a bit of a shock, and so it's a variable, changed some of our equations, and I get that, but I thought it was important to be able to share that prior to doing this. I think sharing that information after this is all said and done, when I knew about that variable, I think would be irresponsible of me, and I think that's irresponsible of us, responsible of us as a board of education as well.
Same note, wouldn't, with this entity that has been professional with us and engaged in this on, on a really professional level, and we're appreciative of, isn't it then worse business if we agree to this and then we back out?
No, I agree, that'd be worse. No, that's worse. No, that's worse. So I, I think when we look at things, honestly, even if we postpone it, that's, that's a, that's a pretty clear telegraph to, and I'll, I'll probably have to talk to that company tomorrow and say, hey, I don't know where we are. And, and that, and that's fair, because I think that's a representation of what we're talking about right now. And then I can work to get some better timelines from him shortly.
On the curriculum piece, I don't see any reason we can't budget several hundred thousand dollars a year, minimum, address those needs. I mean, this is the first I've heard some of the scope tonight. There's money in the budget. I just can't sit here and tell you, yes, we can do this, because I don't know the totality, if that makes sense, if we're planning to catch it up, if we're looking at a three-year adoption, a five, however those pieces, those pieces fit on the education. We have some funds there to address it, moving forward, but I can't speak to the whole scope, because I just haven't seen that.
As it stands in this moment, there are funds allocated that can be spent to at least start, start, to be, a plan to be built.
Yeah, I mean, when Mr. Richards and I met, I mean, we had a 500,000, we were able, 160,000 had already been bought, I'm like, just roll that 350,000. I mean, to me, I'm like, get it done, I could care less, the money's budgeted go. So, I hope, I hope that helps. And we can build a plan to.
Yes.
Get the curriculum to the level it needs to be and put that into what we're, what they ask is for, for operating, or, or PI, right? We don't know what the number is, you kind of gave us a, a range, it's probably closer to a million, million a year than here, right? If we're talking just order of magnitude kind of, kind of numbers.
Okay. So my recommendation, we put it on here because it was, we needed to come up with the agenda. But I wanted to hear how the conversation went for the other parts of this, based upon some, based upon some of those. I do agree, Dr. McBride. I think within a month, we should be able to know a lot more than we know today. Will we know absolutely everything? No, but I think we'll know substantially more than what we know today, today. And I've heard what Mr. Kizbeth and Mr. Perez, and I'm not, I'm not trying to speak for anybody, but I think waiting, what it sounds like is waiting, taking it off and revisiting this in February. That allows me to telegraph to that company that, hey, there's, hey, there's some variables changing, don't us yet. But something that we thought was kind of ironclad, there's, there's some unease about it. Not a, not of that project, not of their quality and not of anything, but our, our funding mechanism internally, not anything with them. We would, we would hopefully, an answer for that. In fact, I think, not hopefully, we will have an answer for that in February as to whether or not we will proceed with that or not proceed. Is, that's what I'm kind of hearing, because I don't think we want, think we want to, we can't sit on this indefinitely. We can't just kick the can down the road and stuff like that, but on the same token, I'm hearing what you're, that's kind of what I'm hearing, but maybe I'm wrong. So that's, if I had to sum up.
You uncovered new information, information since the last board meeting, other expenses that we weren't anticipating. We don't have a lot of slack funds.
No.
Right? So
We're pretty.
We, we, we can't afford many bumps in the road, right? Right? So we found a bump. All right. If we can buy a month, not buy a month, let's just say buy a month. If we can get a month, I'm, I'm satisfied with, with a month.
So we have a motion and a second to approve it. We would need to vote that down. Which is, which is fine. We can.
Or do you want to make a, a
A motion to rescind?
Yeah. Well, or we could just make a, there could be a
Motion to rescind, the motion to approve, if we could.
A motion to what?
Motion to rescind.
I'll make a, to rescind. And that just takes it off the agenda, right? Okay.
Yes.
I do agree with Mr., with Mr. Kizbeth and Mr. Perez. I think that we have historically not taken action as swiftly as we need to. And I do think that we do, we do need to be making progress. I worry about moving forward with the million dollar track while we have potentially a $2 million curriculum deficit.
There's no, there's no $2 million tax, tax, I mean, hole that we're going to budget. I think the public doesn't, that's not what we're telling them. We, we have a long-term plan. But I think the reality, and I don't want to be rude, is we might as well just tell the kids there's going to be no track next year. Because we can barely function on the track this year. We're only able to, we're only able to use, I think, three lanes, two cross relays. And if we're not in line this year, then you're looking maybe next year. And at that point, we're realistically not going to have a program.
And I, and I hear that. And I, and I just, I cannot prioritize athletics.
All athletics.
In this moment, I cannot prioritize athletics.
We have budgeted for curriculum. Our superintendents have not used that money for curriculum. It's been there.
2%, 1%, then it's not that big of a problem, right? We uncovered a stone. We're trying to figure out, is it a pebble or is it a boulder that we need to dig out of the ground? Right? And we, I think that's the, the suggestion. We give you a month to figure out how big, how big of a rock we're trying to dig up.
If we post, if we postpone, we will lose our spot for construction.
I really don't know. I know you've spoken with them on that front more than I have. I think for a month, I think we could, I think if we said, we, we don't know anything, we, you know, we're, we're in limbo for everything. I think if we set a month, we set a month, maybe the other thing that we could do is, we do have the ability. We don't necessarily have to wait until the end of February to have a meeting. We could have a special meeting beforehand. I, I think it would be, it would be necessary to say, we would have a decision no later than the regular February board meeting. To say that we would need to resolve this prior to then. But there is nothing that stops us. I mean, it puts us more under the gun to try to get, try to get curriculum sooner. But I know we're already working towards that. And there, there's nothing that stops us. We don't necessarily have to wait until the end of February's regular board meeting to discuss this and take action.
And the messaging is definitely not, definitely not, that we don't care, but want there to be a track season. I think that we have shown and committed and y'all have done a ton of work to get to this point. And some of these are unfortunate events that aren't the, the district's fault. But the curriculum pieces do fall, do fall on us. And those are, if we make a decision that then once we do say, say yes to something, we're saying no to something else, I, I, I have grave concerns around that.
On a motion to rescind, need a second, second.
Like, it's the motion to rescind. Do we need a second for that?
Yes, and then we'll do a roll call on that.
Second.
And then just to clarify, this is a motion to rescind, so.
Going to rescind the motion to approve, yes, yes.
What? Yes.
Yes.
And so if you vote yes now, you are voting to remove it off of the agenda for this evening.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make certain that people understand what they're voting for, because that's the, that's the, the only thing worse is having people who's voting for something other than what I was doing.
And before you do that, I just want to make another comment. If we do rescind the motion and put it off another month, and then in February decide to do it, are we going to get a rush job? To finish it in time?
What I will, what I will commit to is I'll get ahold of the company tomorrow. I don't believe so, because right now we are still on the calendar. We're still locked in for them to do this work. My, this would be my guess, and I don't know it for, I don't know it for fact, but my guess is that they're going to look, when I call them, go, okay, now we're going to get a little nervous now. Our, which, because I, rightly so.
I would, I would. We already approved the track and groundwork, our excavation several months back.
Yeah. So this, so this will be a little, but I think if we say, my message to them is we just need a little time to make sure we can get some of our financial ducks, this will be my message to them, but we just need to get some of our financial ducks in a row. We just need a few more weeks, at, at the latest, a month, at the latest, at the latest. I think if we can do it earlier, I would, I would advise us, if we're capable of making that decision earlier, you know, I can talk to Mr. Williams and we can have a special board meeting even for that sole purpose, to do, to do that. There's nothing that forces us to wait, to wait until.
And I think the, the homework then is, you know, how big of a problem did we uncover with the curriculum budget, right? Are we, are we out of line by 100% or 2%?
Curriculum stuff, so you know, I mean, those are normally long in my experience.
But, but I also think, think if, if in my, with the track company, if they say, listen, you, you guys got to keep moving on this or you lose your spot in line, then I think that's something I bring back to the board and say, we're going to need to have a special board meeting sooner rather than later. And we've got to make the decisions with what we have in hand right now. And that's where we are. And I don't think there's anything wrong with presenting that, with presenting that back to, here's where we are.
That was going to be my question. If, if you do find that out, then that will get relayed to us because while, I mean, especially for me, I wasn't here for any of the front end legwork for this. So I'm coming in really, really feeling that I'm a set of, you know, understanding or knowing all of the ins and outs of how desperate the situation is. So a little extra time doesn't hurt me, but I don't want to lose our spot because I don't feel like the doubt, I, I feel like, I feel like this is something to it or not. And as everyone said, we're, we were put in a really bad position by this former entity, but I, I think we, this is going to be a project we can't avoid forever. So, so.
I mean, Mr. Perez is not, he's unusable.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's, he, he's not wrong.
We're kind of, we, we're stuck to do something
Yes.
in the near future. So while I would mind some more time to get some more information on the curriculum and for me to catch up a little better on, you know, speaking, you know, speaking with maybe some of you on this, I don't also want to say we won't revisit it until the end of February and then, you know, we drop the ball, so.
I will be in conversation with them tomorrow and I can report back. Is the one that was pushing to rescind and
Repeat the motion, please.
So we've got a motion on the floor to rescind the approval of item 8.2.
So a yes vote would remove the item from the agenda.
We already approved for, for fresh recollection here.
Tonight or previously?
Another question I had, can you?
So previously, I'd have to go back through. I don't have any of that in front of me. We approved the site work and the track itself. This was just the piece to pay for it.
Financing correction.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess I am just sitting here kind of scratching my head. I, I, you know these guys, but we've approved that contract and signed it.
So can we get sued for breach of contract for not going through with the track?
Speak to that.
I don't know. So we, I, we'll have to do some more, we're going to have some legwork, some legwork to do on that front as well.
We, we've already approved the work. This is just the financing.
This is just to pay for it.
How we're going to pay for it. So we've already appropriated it. We just need to expend it now and figure out how we're going to pay for it. Or, right, then we run into the contractor.
There's contract issue. Again, I, I hope these individuals are gracious, but we did execute a contract that we approved. This is the piece to pay for it.
So you voted, this has been voted on already to approve it. So what are we rescinding for if we've already, already approved the work? If we've approved to do the work and we've signed a contract, we have to figure out how to pay for it, right? I mean, I'm asking a question truly.
The option on the table is, if, if we take a, a closer look at the curriculum, and I'm going to make up a number, make up a number, don't.
No, you're fine.
And then can say, look, we need 10 million per curriculum. I'm picking an absurd number to, you're laughing.
I mean, honestly, it kind of caught me off guard. I'd have never put it on the agenda if I thought this was coming up tonight, to be frank with you. Because we approved it, then we're paying for it. Now we've kind of got a black hole with curriculum, with the curriculum we fixed previously. So I'm.
Well, my question with curriculum too, I mean, it, it doesn't appear to me that maybe the issue was monetary as much as not like dropping a ball, planning and looking out to the future. Next year we need this, next year we need this. So if the, if we have money budgeted for that, we, really somewhere the ball got dropped in.
We don't have a strategic plan.
Yeah, and, and not having a curriculum plan, which, which again, too, kind of going back to, why don't, I still, and it's another question I need to ask. I know that we had a curriculum committee that included board members, right? I'm assuming teachers, maybe community members.
Some community members.
That has been by the wayside.
Definitely, yeah.
Do we have a curriculum committee in the district?
I don't.
You mean, is there any curriculum committee at all?
No.
No, okay.
That's my concern.
So I guess maybe my other thought is why, don't we, maybe, that's another discussion, but I think we need to have a curriculum committee, curriculum committee, whether it includes teachers.
It has to be focused on curriculum. What happened with the program committee, it just expanded, expanded, expanded. They were talking about all kinds of things and they were two, three hour meetings and
Right.
That's, we need to get to a place where we have a, we have a curriculum meeting, we have this meeting, you're going to be getting a textbook in seven years. So you review, you bring the books in, the community has the time to look at them, and then you approve the.
And I apologize, I probably mucked this up, getting this on the agenda tonight, but I thought we were down the rabbit hole, the rabbit hole. Again, I'm not going to execute any financing. I haven't secured any terms, no rate, no nothing. So if you approve this tonight, I'm coming back to you. I mean, we would have to vote this motion to rescind down, but I am somewhat concerned with executed contracts or that track replacement. The last thing I want to do is put the board in peril, then myself in peril by saying we're free and clear, because I know when you sign a contract, holy smokes, I've not consulted any counsel on that. I was not prepared for that tonight, for that tonight.
I don't think we kicked the can down the, I'm sorry, I don't think we kicked the can down the road another month. We've got this stuff in place.
You're going to get another crack at the financing, if that makes sense. I'm going to put that in front of you for approval. I'm not doing anything, saying things singularly on my own.
If we, well, we, we have to vote now to rescind.
We would want to.
But question, one more question, I'm sorry, since I'm still trying to catch up.
Okay.
If we vote, if we would have voted or if we do vote to go forward with this resolution, we are not, we are not, I mean, we are not approving financing.
We're approving me moving forward with it, but I have no idea what those terms are.
And then we will, it will come back to us for a vote again.
Just to be safe, I always like to do that. Here's the terms, here's where we're at. Do we proceed?
And the work was already, was already voted to be done.
My concern, because payment aside, I mean, not to make an excuse, we could technically write the check out of general fund, but we did execute contracts we board approved. And now the financing piece is in limbo, but I have not. I, I was woefully unprepared for this tonight. I apologize. I thought.
Same here, same here.
We've approved those financing and, and we're at a different spot. So I, I just, I'm very, very concerned about executed contracts being out there.
And to, and to be fair to everybody, we all move forward with that without this piece of information.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's not as though that work isn't valid and right, right? We did prioritize, I mean, we had lengthy hours around that. There's, there's new variables.
So let me make sure everybody's clear. We have the motion to rescind. If we want to go back to the original, we would need to vote down the motion to rescind. Yeah, this, yeah, this, sorry. And then we're back to the original. I would have the motion by Mr. Kizbeth, the second by Mr. Perez to proceed with the lease purchase resolution. Before I do anything with that, given the conversations tonight, that is all going to come back before the board. Just for my own peace of mind, if that makes sense. Okay. Does that help?
There any more discussion? All right. So Mr. Cook, can you proceed with a vote on, on the motions?
Yes, I will do that. Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, no votes it down, we return to the original.
Okay.
No, thank you. Dr. McBride. Mrs. Steph. Mr. Kizbeth?
No.
Mr. Perez? Okay.
So we've got the issue back on the table?
Correct.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the issue? 8.2 lease purchase resolution for the track.
I would still like there to be expediency around getting this information. I'm very interested in a special board meeting if, if needed.
So if the board wants to proceed cautiously, we've already, already approved the tracks. If this were to be voted down, I can put it back up. Does that make sense? If you really want to have that fail safe, we vote the financing down tonight, we figure it out from there. I'm not out anything.
That sends a much, much stronger message to the
Well, we still have signed contracts. I mean, technically, I think we're on the hook, so to speak. so to speak.
Right, we're still, we still have a signed contract.
I agree.
The financing issue is still there, we've already.
Agreed.
We're moving forward with this.
Mr. Perez?
I think because of that, I think we're realistically, realistically debating that finance now, because I think that's changed the equation, but I think, I don't know, we can't really put under new business, but I would want to see follow-up in terms of expect a plan, but I also want to be careful, because I think there's a misunderstanding as to, I want to know what we're asking the superintendent, the superintendent to come up with a whole curriculum plan in a couple, no. I mean, the last time I think we discussed curriculum was Common Core. I think that was the last time.
So let me interject there, the, the ask is, we have a budget line item for curriculum, for curriculum. Is it 100% off or is it 2% off? Right? Are, are we, are we, again, how big is the boulder? Are we uncovering a couple million dollar boulder or a couple thousand dollars?
If you needed two and a half million over five years, 500,000 a year, do it?
So, and I think that's where we just need a little bit more time.
Okay.
And honestly, I just think we need a little bit more time. Because your, your point's valid, and Mr. Cook is completely on the money, is, and you said, you said it as well, Mr. Williams, if we need 2% more, we can figure that out, but if it's a, so if it's a sizable chunk more, then that's something we need to be able to bring back. My takeaway from this conversation is that there is an expectation that I can give to you, not the full details of the plans of the plan, but that it is my belief that we are going to need X amount budgeted per year, and that we believe that X amount per year will put us on a regular cycle to approve the curriculum materials at a level that we believe is necessary.
Because remember, he said, he said, that all of those, all the pieces we've been talking about, all the operating budget, all of these pieces, none of that takes into account.
Whatever that increases.
Whatever that increases.
And, and the, the options for the finance on the table, the, the range is seven years at $160,000 a year to, to 15 years, $89,000 a year, right? So there's a, there's a $70,000.
Yeah.
Got option there. Yeah, and we've got some flexibility there as well. We've talked about, we don't want to be in the land-owning business anymore.
Right.
That might alleviate some pressure on this in the coming months. It's going to be a very short-term thing, potentially.
So there's just a lot of variables that are up, when I keep talking about, we need to eventually land the plane, though.
Yeah.
We, we need to land the plane, because we've got a number of variables, and, and I would say we've got a lot of planes up in the air, and we're going to have to prioritize, some of them have to hit, have to land, have to land soon, and have a little bit longer.
But a new storm just popped up.
Yeah.
So asking us to, to do some of those things, when we had a hurricane, and now we have a, maybe a tsunami, and maybe it's just some rain.
It's a tornado.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I think, I think the other part of it, and it's the part, I'm more interested in seeing what the superintendent's plan, what his plan is to address this long-term, like how often do, what's going to be the process, so that at least we can tell. We can't budget without a process, so it's like, we're going to have this review. I mean, you're not, you're even at the level, at the level, we use textbooks, do you use online stuff, what's going to be the policy, and so.
So I, I think that's, when I say a curriculum committee, I don't think there's any problem. In fact, I think it would probably be, and not only even know if we call it, I think we just call it curriculum committee. And that's not a bad, and that's not a bad thing, and have small people, and I think having a board member or so, and having a few community members, it's always good, so we can talk about the transparency of a process. But then that committee should say, okay, it is now time, looking to Mr. Alvarado, because I know he was a high school English, a math teacher, sorry, I was trying to promote you, trying to promote you to English, Mr. Alvarado. He just flinched, but he's a high school math teacher, I should be able to tell him, it's every 10 years, and now this math department, that, that curriculum committee is not going to be the one.
No.
Take, take, right. We're going to involve the math teachers and the experts in the area, but what the committee should do is be able to articulate, here is the process that each of those entities goes through, whatever, whatever field it is, whatever department, whatever grade level, here is the process that we follow, the curriculum committee, curriculum committee, and this is followed.
Yes.
Yeah.
So math happens at this point.
Yeah. And whether we say that in every seven years process, in every 10 years process, you know, six, five years, I mean, I think we have to look for that sweet spot. Actually, teachers would tell you, teachers would tell you, we don't want to too often, we don't want to change materials too often. But what's that sweet spot that we identify, and I think we can do some quick work, and not that we have to do what everybody else does, but let's do a little bit of due diligence and find out what's kind of customary for high-performing schools that we, we aspire to, aspire to, and the range is between five years and 10 years, okay, then maybe we say, let's, let's shoot for seven, let's shoot for the middle of that. So I think having those plans, not, not saying, and what I wouldn't be coming back to is saying, well, three years, three years from now is when the high school science, it's something that we have, that's in the weeds more that we have to figure out, but what I'm hearing is, what is the plan for eventually getting to it, so that I can turn to any teacher, any department, any grade level, and say, we will eventually get you on a cycle, where it's every number of years, whatever, whatever X is.
Okay. With the outcome being a budget that's based on what we.
Correct.
Correct, we need a plan and a budget, for sure.
The same thing we discussed with instruments.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, so, we have a motion.
Back to the OG.
We have a motion and a second.
That is correct.
Okay. And we are, again, voting to adopt the lease purchase resolution without terms yet.
That's correct.
Right? So, so, and that's not a change that has been presented in the first place.
It's directing me to work on that.
Yes, okay. Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Questions on all that?
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate the board allowing me to go through that journey. My first board meeting as president.
Happy first board meeting.
All right. Item number nine, board discussion. Anyone have, anyone have any discussion at this time?
Consistent with what you said, I think, I did like that discussion, because I think it reminds us that our priority is education, curriculum, there's different parts of it, but we're going to have that type of schools they want and what they want us to provide. That's the reality. We're not going to be able to just, you know, patch everything and thing, you know, we can't do that anymore. So you need to tell us as a public what you want, do you want us to provide the whole experience or, or just minimum? Because I don't think any of us want to provide the bare minimum, and it would be criminal to do that. But just to highlight that, I just wanted to point out, last Thursday, commendations to Mr. Mason and the STEM Fair at TU. Glad you got to see it again, and, and we do it every year. They make up their own topics, their own thesis, and this year they had the, like, is sugar substitutes for flour, I believe, in baking, or eggs in baking? What, what kind of, you know, does rock music or music or study versus silence? Does a golf ball that costs more travel more than a golf ball that costs less? They were, there's so many projects, I can't go through them, but it was good to see them just come up with these projects themselves and do the work, do the work, the thesis, and I'm sure the, I forgot how many cookies they baked on that one, it was a ton, though, but kudos to all the students, I'm not going to name them, but that was already in the online thing. But I think that's what we need to stress is, do we want to provide students with those opportunities or the bare minimum, bare minimum, so.
Any other discussion or comments? Thank you, Mr. Perez. Great. Moving on to item number 10, we have an executive session to consider the employment of a public employee, a public employee, motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Any action coming out of that? I don't believe so?